Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, July 29, 2025. It's 2:00 PM. My name is Ty Mencer, Chair of the Board. To my right, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier. Commissioner Carolina Mejia. To my left, Commissioner Rachel Grant and Commissioner Emily Claus. County Manager Leonard Hernandez. Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings. And our Clerk of the Board, Amy Davis. As we get going, we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to be leading it, so please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proceed with the land acknowledgement, Mr. Vice Chair.
We would also like to start today with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and stewarded the lands and waterways of this county with great care and in continuous sovereign nations today, specifically the Squaxon Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connect across all barriers of heritage indifference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and remember history as a stepping stone towards healing. We commit to working together to honor our past and build our future with truth. Thank you.
Vice Chair. Next up is approval of agenda. There's a proposed motion to amend the agenda.
I move to amend the agenda to move Consent Item 6 in our local agreement with the City of Olympia for District Court Services to Department Item 6.
Motion in second to make that change from consent to Department Item for Item 6. Discussion on the motion. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So now is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion in second to approve agenda as amended. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, first up, under Presentations, Item 2 is National Association of Counties Achievement Awards. This is our first presentation this afternoon. I am going to let the County Manager give us an overview of this item.
Thank you, Chair. Thurston County is proud to announce the National Association of Counties, NACO, has awarded 19 achievement awards to various programs and services offered by the county. For the last 55 years, the NACO Achievement Award Program has annually recognized innovative county government programs in 18 categories, covering a wide spectrum of county responsibilities. Programs and services that strengthen communities and improve the lives of community members are awarded, and one noteworthy program received the Best in Category Award for each of NACO's 18 categories. Thurston County received the most achievement awards in Washington State and were thrilled to announce these. You can clap at that. I'll now pass it over to Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings to get started on the awards.
All right. Thank you, Leonard. Thank you all for being here today. As I announce these awards, I'd like to express my sincere appreciation and excitement for Thurston County as a whole. The Board of County Commissioners provides important policy direction. County Managers provide the opportunity to remove barriers and create pathways, but staff are really the people that make it happen here at the county. Without the energy and dedication to serving your neighbors, none of this would be possible. And this list may feel long, but it is a snapshot of all of the great work that's accomplished by all of us here at Thurston County every day. So again, there's a round of applause also. So what I'll do is announce the Officer Department, the program name, and the NACO category for each one, and then please send up one person to receive the award from Olivia. Afterwards, we invite everyone to join us outside of the boardroom in the open atrium for a short gathering and photos. It'd be great for all of the award runners to gather for one single photo. All right. Drum roll. Here comes the first. Auditor's Office. Program name: Thurston County, Your Neighbors, Your Elections. Category: Civic Education and Public Information. All right, Mary, while you're up there, I'm going to keep, I'm going to read off all the other awards you got. Are you ready?
I want to say kudos to Emily who did a fantastic job on this program. It's also one of our national Clary Awards.
That's great. That's great. Let's do that. Have a little thank you for each one. Here we go. Next award: Thurston County Auditor's Elections Security Enhancement Program. Category: County Administration and Management.
So 33% of the funding for our voting center was really through grant funding and a lot of great partnerships within the county and input from staff. I want to thank Tilly and Lynette and the rest of the elections team who really put a lot of work and planning into that.
That's great. Next, Thurston County Passport Fair. Category: County Administration and Management.
So Jared and Spencer, I should have had Tilly and Lynette stand up also, from our recording and licensing department. You know, they love doing these fairs, which is fantastic, meaning they give up a Saturday once a quarter, and with Real ID, they were super busy, but it was great for those parents and people who couldn't take a day off during the week. So thanks for your commitment, and your staff for giving up their time.
Excellent. Do you want to have Tilly stand up for the elections programs? Go for it.
There's more. But wait, there's more.
Next is Thurston County Voting Access at Your Library. County Administration and Management.
One of the things we noticed in the 2024 presidential election is the bus didn't run until 8:00 to our new election center, so we worked with intercity transit. In fact, I meet with Emily Burkemp tomorrow to thank her also, who extended their bus service to go through the evening past 8:00 on election night.
That's great. And then finally, Thurston County Elections and Public Partnership. County Resiliency, Infrastructure, Energy, and Sustainability.
So whoops, this was for public transit. The other one must have been for the libraries. So we work with all the libraries in Thurston County, I've reversed these, to ensure that voters, if they can't go to our voting center, can register, get assistance at every single community library in the county. And we also used Lacy Library as our second voting center, so thank you. I have an amazing staff. Lynette Milton's my supervisor, Talina Putty-Puller, my elections manager, Jared Kraus, my recording licensing manager, Spencer Ryan, recording licensing supervisor, and they just are get-'em-done type of people, so thank you.
Well done, Auditor's Office. Thank you. All right. The next office in department or department is Community Planning and Economic Development. We have Ashley O'Rae or a team member come to the front. Excellent. Marissa Wispen coming to the front to accept the program name Thurston County Habitat Conservation Plan for the Community and Economic Development category. Thank you, Marissa.
We would like to thank the county and all of our partners for their continued support of the Habitat Conservation Plan. It's been quite the journey getting the HCP in place and off the ground, and we thank everyone for their support.
Excellent. Next, Representative from Pretrial Services is Nate or Karen. Excellent. Great. Come on up, Nate. Program name: The Thurston County Resource Hub in the category of Criminal Justice and Public Safety.
Thanks. I wish that I could say I have the support of a giant staff, but you're looking at half my staff. My other half is running the program right now, but I really just want to thank all the law and justice stakeholders, the Board of County Commissioners, for making the program possible, for driving effective change in our community, and for letting me lead it. Appreciate it.
Okay, the next is a bunch from Public Health and Social Services. And so I'll ask Director Fryhite to send up whomever she likes for these as they are announced. Program name: Thurston County Fetal Infant Mortality Review Program in the category of Health. Please.
I didn't know I was going to speak, so thank you. I want to thank my team. They've been fabulous. We created the first fetal infant mortality review program in the state of Washington, so it's been pretty profound and yeah, thank you for acknowledging.
Next is the Thurston County Health Habits Food Program.
And then I just want to quickly thank Leslie Price and Alex Dingus for their support. Alex is in the Emergency Preparedness Team, and Leslie is in the Population Health Team. We work together with Roof and Thurston County Food Bank for this program.
Next program name is the QPR Suicide Prevention Program in the category of Human Services.
Thank you. This award is really important to our community. It's question, persuade, refer. I want to especially thank Elizabeth Hawkins, our education and outreach, who does this training to help prevent suicide.
Next program name: Thurston County Public Health and Social Services Communications in the category of Information Technology.
Thank you. I'll just also shout out Alice for her help on this project, and this has just been a great tool to get other languages out to our community and services to those who speak other languages. Thank you.
Next program: Thurston County Public Health and Social Services Workforce Program in the category of Personnel Management, Employment, and Training.
Thank you. Just a big thank you to the Public Health Workforce Team. We're really passionate about our employees and recruiting and retaining the best talent and developing our workforce, and this program has allowed us to do that, so thank you.
The last for Public Health and Social Services is the Medical Reserve Corps Recruitment and Retention Initiative for the category of Volunteers.
I can take no credit for this. This is our Emergency Preparedness and Response Team who handles the county's Medical Reserve Corps, so Alex Dingus, Hope Clark, and Daphne Devlin, who have done this program. Thank you.
Okay, next up is the Treasurer's Office in Central Services. Leaders Jeff Gadman and Kim Burnett. The program for this one is the Tax Title Community Mailings in the category of Financial Management.
I'm Eric with the Treasurer's Office, and this has been going on for about a year, but pretty much it's just to get tax title properties out on to the tax rolls again so money gets back to the TCAs. We've had properties that have been sitting there for over 100 years, and it's slowly working, but appreciate it. Thank you.
Hold the awards up. Cameron. Okay, Public Works is coming up next. Program: Thurston County Public Works Noxious Weeds Landowner Assistance Program in the category of County Administration and Management.
Thank you. Yes, we do a lot of work helping the community out with noxious weed infestations, particularly knotweed, which was the focus of this project, and I'd like to recognize the rest of our team: Abby Haley, John Johnson, and Sarah Watkins.
Public Works: Thurston County Water and Sewer Utility Consolidation. Category: Financial Management.
Thank you. This represents a big milestone for our utilities. Used to have 14 accounts financially for water and sewer. We're down to four now, so big administrative simplification. I'd like to thank our entire water and sewer team, as well as our finance team, Karen Wies, our director, Tim Wilson, our Water Resources Manager, and Erin Torman and our utility planner, who couldn't be here today.
Next is the Trail Preservation and Rehabilitation Program for the category of Parks and Recreation.
I'd like to recognize everybody who played a part in this with Public Works. This truly is a benefit to Thurston County residents and trail users as a whole. Thank you.
Next is Thurston County Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program in the category of Transportation.
This is a small program that we have. We try and make neighborhoods safer for everyone, more livable for kids, families, slow speeds down. We have a small traffic engineering team that works on it together to bring this great opportunity to neighborhoods.
All right, and this is the final NACO award, and this is a big one. This is Best in Category for all of the country. Thurston County Fix-It Fair in the category of Volunteers. Come on up, Director Wies. Join your team.
Before you get started, I just wanted to add, so when NACO does a Best in Category, imagine all the counties in the United States submitting for awards, and it is a competitive process. I believe this is one of the first times we've submitted in this, for NACO, and to be selected as the Best in Category right out the gate is phenomenal. And so as part of that, we were asked to go back to Washington DC for a special ceremony, and that's what the director is holding. You can hold it up there. We received that award for our county, and I believe staff went to a special dinner. And Karen, you want to add a little bit to it?
Sure. Yeah, so this is for Fix-It Fair, which Rob will just mention a little bit about, but this is really an opportunity that showcased our ability to collaborate and partner with the community. We would not have been able to do this all on our own. This involved other outreach from some of our intercity transit, Lacy Maker Space, our helping out with the Master Carden, Master Carden Recycler Program. Thank you. So anyway, we're very, very honored to receive this on behalf of all of the partners within the community that helped us win this award, so.
Thank you. Yeah, you covered pretty much all of it. It is a real privilege to work with the 24 volunteers who made the November 2024 Fix-It Fair happen, and to continue working with them, we've had more events since then because of the success of it, and every time we get to see them, it just reinforces the reason that I'm here, so thank you.
We can have the Commissioners come and join us up front. We invest in category is a big deal. Public Works, we have also created this little slideshow for you, recognition of your hard work during the Fix-It Fair, also submitting, you can invest in. Come on down.
Yeah, and the other team members have come up for this particular work, so.
We can have the Chair of the Board. Then hold this. And then we have one more announcement. Commissioners can stay put.
All right, that was a lot of individual awards and great work done by all in the county. Now, the County Manager has Thurston County's own addition to the NACO awards.
Yeah, for our first year of awards, we're initiating the most awards by department, and we'd like to call up Dr. Jen Fryhite and as many of her team as she'd like. We're super proud of the fact that they won the most awards out of the county. This is, we're kicking this off to foster healthy competition among our departments. There are so many amazing things that will take place day in and day out in county government. The fact that NACO is recognizing it doesn't make it any more special, it just means that the work you've done has been highlighted at a national level. And I want to give a special thanks to Commissioners who, among my first weeks here, they mentioned NACO and the importance of us participating in this program, and I don't know if they'd like to say anything, but Dr. Fryhite, would you mind coming up?
Wouldn't you get close?
That was a nice surprise. Thank you.
Before we convene for a short reception, we'll just hand back over, Chair, to you to see if any Commissioners would like to say a few words.
Commissioner Mejia.
Thank you. First of all, congratulations to all of you and your amazing work. I think that, not as a Commissioner, but just as a Thurston County resident, I feel so proud of all the services that are offered here in our community and all the great work that the county is doing, and I was the one who told the County Manager the first couple of weeks he was here, and one of the reasons that I mentioned that to him was because when I first attended a National Association of Counties conference, and I was seeing all the programs that were awarded, I was like, wait, we're doing that, and we've done that, and we've, this program's already in process, and it's been a great success here in our community, but we weren't submitting this, and we weren't getting recognized. And, you know, thank you, County Manager, for, you know, allowing, not allowing, but for encouraging offices and departments to submit for this, because I think this just highlights the amazing work that you all are doing and the great services that you are providing to our community. So thank you, County Manager. Thank you to all the amazing staff that we have here for, you know, for all of these achievements and bringing these awards back here to Thurston County, and I believe we were the most recognized county in Washington State, so that really speaks a great deal about the work that's being done here.
I can say that, you know, I'm proud to see all of this. A few of these, the Commissioners had some significant involvement in, but most of them not. You know, we worked on trails and tax title properties and the Resource Hub for sure, and utility consolidation, but a lot of the stuff that's going on here, staff is doing it and driving it, and it's at, you know, a national significance in terms of the quality. I know the Board of Health had a presentation on the infant program, mortality review, and that was like, that blew all of our minds. We were so happy, proud to be like the first county to be doing that in the state. I'm looking at, okay, I want to make sure I say that correctly, but anyway, these things are worth elevating so people know what their government's up to, besides what the Commissioners are up to, because we're only involved in a small fraction of what actually Thurston County is doing for the community. So with that, we're going to recess for about 15 minutes. We're going to get some photos. It is 2:24, so the Board will be in recess until 2:40, at which time we'll pick up with our second presentation and the rest of today's agenda. Thank you.
So join us on.[1432.53]
Before we convene for a short reception, we'll just hand back over chair to you to see if any commissioners would like to say a few words.
Commissioner McHale.
Thank you. First of all, congratulations to all of you and your amazing work. I think that, not as a commissioner, but just as a Thurston County resident, I feel so proud of all the services that are offered here in our community and all the great work that the county is doing. And I was the one who told the county manager the first couple of weeks he was here. And one of the reasons that I, I mentioned that to him was because when I first attended a National Association of Counties conference and I was seeing all the programs that were awarded, I was like, wait, we're doing that. And we've done that. And we've, this program's already in process and it's been a great success here in our community. But we weren't submitting this and we weren't getting recognized. And, you know, thank you, county manager, for, you know, allowing, not allowing, but for encouraging offices and departments to submit for this, because I think this just highlights the amazing work that you all are doing and the great services that you are providing to our community. So, thank you, county manager. Thank you to all the amazing staff that we have here for, you know, for all of these achievements and bringing these awards back here to Thurston County. And I believe we were the most recognized county in Washington State. So, that really speaks a great deal about the work that's being done here.
I can say that, you know, I'm proud to see all of this. A few of these, the commissioners had some significant involvement in, but most of them not. You know, we worked on trails and tax title properties and the resource hub for sure and utility consolidation. But a lot of the stuff that's going on here, staff is doing it and driving it. And it's at, you know, a national significance in terms of the quality. I know the Board of Health had a presentation on the infant program, mortality review, and that was like, that blew all of our minds. We were so happy, proud to be like the first county to be doing that in the state. I'm looking at, okay, I want to make sure I say that correctly. But anyway, these things are worth, are worth elevating so people know what their government's up to, besides what the commissioners are up to, because we're only involved in a small fraction of what actually Thurston County is doing for the community. So, with that, we're going to recess for about 15 minutes. We're going to get some photos. It is 2:24, so the board will be in recess until 2:40, at which time we'll pick up with our second presentation and the rest of today's agenda. Thank you.
2:42, we are back for our commissioners' business meeting for July 29, 2025. And next up is public comment related to items on the agenda for today. This is the consent proclamation for, sorry, so sorry. Item two under presentations is our Thurston County Fair consent proclamation, and we do have a speaker related to that. And here she comes. This is Thomasina Cooper, the Thurston County Fair Manager. It's Gordon Eric. Gordon Eric.
Hello, commissioners. Hello, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good to see everybody. Thank you so much for having me here today. I am Thomasina Cooper. I am your fairgrounds and event center manager. As you can see, I'm rocking my tie-dye t-shirt here today, celebrating Disco Dave the Peacock, who is our mascot right there. Commissioner Grant's got him proudly displayed. So, we are approximately T minus 43 hours and 30 minutes until the gates open, but who's counting? Me. It's with immense gratitude and excitement that I stand before you today to accept this proclamation, recognizing the 2025 Thurston County Fair. On behalf of everyone involved in bringing this event to life, thank you for your continued support and for highlighting the importance of the fair in our community. We are ready to make it a truly dazzling spectacle worthy of Disco Dave's most vibrant tail feathers. The energy right now on the fairgrounds is absolutely palpable. I can tell you, I just came from there and it is buzzing with excitement. Volunteers, staff, exhibitors, and vendors are all working tirelessly, putting the finishing touches on what promises to be an unforgettable experience. The fair, of course, starts this Thursday at 10:00 a.m. and it runs all the way through Sunday, the 3rd of August. And we look forward to welcoming our residents and visitors alike, inviting everyone to get their groove on. We are particularly excited about the many new additions this year and have also planned some fantastic deal days to make the fair even more accessible for everyone in our community. We have an array of exciting new food vendors offering diverse culinary delights, to engaging activities for all ages, and captivating demonstrations showcasing local talents and crafts. If somebody's really interested, talk to me about the Conservation Corner. Conservation District is going to be doing some great demonstrations for us. It's very cool. We have something for everyone around every corner, and it is a kaleidoscope of fun. Mark your calendars for our special day's Thrifty Thursday with $1 entry with a donation to the Food Bank, a longstanding partnership. Carnival Wristband Day on Friday means unlimited rides for one price. And on Saturday, we will honor our community heroes, our first responders, and Military Members with Military Day. And we will, of course, kick off Saturday with the ever-popular Commissioners Pancake Breakfast. We're looking forward to having you all on site. Finally, Sunday is Kids' Day, packed with activities and fun for our youngest fairgoers, sure to have them fanning their own little tail feathers with delight. Clearly, I enjoy this, this pun thing. On a serious note, it's more than just a fun event. The Thurston County Fair is a vibrant reflection of our community. It embodies the rich culture, the resilient spirit, the deep heritage, and the incredible talents of all aspects of Thurston County. It's a place where generations connect, where agricultural traditions are honored, and where the innovative spirit of our county shines brightly. A true disco of community pride. We invite every one of you and all of the residents of Thurston County to join us. Come celebrate, learn, and make lasting memories. It's an event that truly brings our whole community together, and we are ready to show off our best moves. Thank you again for this honor and for your support of our county fair.
Things I noticed in looking over the schedule was that Sunday is a full program of entertainment.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, if you can't make it till Sunday, don't think that's, you know, not a full day of stuff.
Oh, we've got tons of stuff on Sunday. We're in fact, we're closing out the night with Chris Gunther and the Honky Tonk Drifters. With thanks to our new sponsor, Lucky Eagle Casino, we were able to secure some more entertainment.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, perfect. Now, let's move to public comment related to items on today's agenda. The Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public. There are guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate. When called, introduce yourself and the area of the county in which you reside. State which agenda item you're speaking to. Address the board, not audience or staff. Silence your cell phones. Board does not respond directly to public comment, but the county manager may follow up with specific items on an as-needed basis. Speakers have three minutes to address the board. Meeting attendees cannot donate speaking time to other speakers. Please be respectful. Board reserves right to restrict a person's opportunity for good cause. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. No outbursts of any kind. No comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business. Written materials provided to the county may be considered public record, subject to public release on request pursuant to the public subject to public release on request pursuant to the Public Records Act. Please withhold remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the board on appeal. Thank you for your cooperation. And Mr. Pettit, I'll call you up first, and then I'll ask for anybody that didn't get a chance to sign up.
In keeping with the spirit, my name's John Pettit, I live on Rich Road. Keeping with the spirit of the intent of being focused on the consent agenda. It's kind of, there is one particular item, of course. I don't personally find to be maybe beneficial because, uh, I don't care for the program in general. I realize some people think a syringe program's really important to hand out needles so people can take their drugs. And, uh, not all people have the same opinion. And I certainly don't like it when I find them laying around the streets, hooked in the trees, and all types of places they aren't supposed to be. The second part of my comment, which I'm actually kind of addressing here is, in the, in the spirit of the nature of the, uh, Open Government and Open Public Meetings Act, the consent agenda, while it is a useful tool, it is not to be a spot just to ratify what was already done in a private session separately. In other words, if there was a consent, uh, an agreement, a conversation, anything more than information shared to you, then it's, uh, it would go beyond the scope if you decided, okay, we all agree to this, let's put it on the consent agenda. That's an agreement, that's a decision already met and actioned. So appropriately, the only things that should be on a consent agenda is things that perhaps are administrative in nature, such as a county manager listing certain things, and then with those certain things, individually, you might choose to bring up that you don't agree to the consent, which would move it over to a department item. That would also promote more public involvement and activities related to the public wanting to be involved. Because if they don't have a focus to even talk about, because, let's be candid, a list of twenty things that's on a piece of paper doesn't get out there as a topic to the people. So, let's promote, uh, public involvement and make sure we follow the Open Public Meetings Act to, uh, be inclusive, not just make all of our decisions kind of behind the scenes and come in and do one little, we approve twenty actions at one time without noting each individual item. After all, you are the representatives of the people, you're not the authorities over the people. Thank you.
Mr. Pettit, is there anyone who wants to provide public comment as to an item on today's agenda that did not get a chance to sign up, including folks online? Okay, then we'll move forward. We have a consent agenda that's now been amended to one through twenty-two. Sorry, County Managers Update, I'm really not following my agenda today.
Sorry, no problem, there's been a lot going on here, nothing to report, Chair, thank you.
Okay, uh, is there a motion regarding the consent agenda that has been amended? I move to approve the consent agenda as presented on today's agenda.
Second.
Motion is second to approve consent agenda items one through twenty-two under item five. Discussion, or there's no, nonverbal motion, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. And that brings us to our department item. With the inter-local agreement, the City of Olympia for District Court Services, this is under District Court, we have Frankie Peters from District Court, uh, the Court Executive Officer, to, uh, maybe provide a little context for this item.
Okay, Chair, I'll, I'll show you, start off. And Frankie, uh, pass over to our Executive Officer to add some additional information. The City of Olympia has requested Thurston County provide all court services for the city, including progressive, alternative, and supervised probation. If approved by the Board of County Commissioners, the administration of the court services and terms of the agreement shall be done in the same manner and agency that Thurston County District Court currently operates. The Commissioners Budget Team and Court Executive Officer have thoroughly reviewed the city, with the city, the prorated, fully-covered costs of service through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. The City of Olympia contractual costs will be incorporated into the cost analysis alongside jurisdictional costs up for renewal beginning in two thousand twenty-seven. And I'll pass over to Frankie to see if he has anything to add.
Thank you so much, County Manager. Frankie Peters, Court Executive Officer, Thurston County District Court. Thank you, Board. I just want to share my appreciation to County Manager, to Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings, as well as Budget Finance Manager Summer Miller. There's been a lot of work that's been going on to, uh, in regards to this. As County Manager provided, this was a request that was brought to us, um, just earlier this year. Uh, so there's been a lot of hands, uh, put into this and a lot of work, so I appreciate all of that.
Questions for Frankie?
I move to approve the inter-local agreement with the City of Olympia to establish court services provided by Thurston County District Court for the City of Olympia and authorize the County Manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the inter-local agreement, City of Olympia regarding court services, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's see, carries unanimously, thank you. It's a big one. Okay, next up is Commissioners Community Reports, Commissioner Claus, would you start?
Okay, so, since the last Board of County Commissioners meeting, I've had a couple external board meetings, or external committee meetings. This week, the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative met, and we had some updates on Energize Thurston, which seems to have been really successful. Our intern Julia gave a report on those numbers, and so if anyone's interested, those numbers are posted online in, at the TCMC meeting. Which can, yeah, you can just search Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative and watch the video if you'd like. We also had a data subcommittee meeting, um, which is one of the Board of Health Subcommittee's. We had a Regional Housing Council meeting. At the RHC meeting, we discussed, um, we're still trying to figure out a date for the next RHC retreat update, but I think at this point, we're going to be moving forward with having those topics discussed at a regularly scheduled RHC meeting, since it's really hard to coordinate everybody's schedule. We also had, um, a Lehigh Opportunity Fund funding recommendation come forward from one of our advisory boards to support one of Lehigh's facilities in, um, updating their elevator, which is out of date. And we also had, um, discussions about the ERP funding. We also, I also met with the Law and Justice Council, and we discussed a draft charter for a data work group that's being put together. So, more to come on that in the future, but that's an exciting update. I had some constituent meetings regarding missing and murdered LGBTQI-plus individuals. I met with, uh, some providers from our local homeless service, um, groups, and we talked more about the funding landscape and operational impacts, of some of the funding changes coming from the federal and state government. Uh, I also met with a group to talk about ADA Title II changes that will go into effect next year, in the spring. I met with some of our District Court partners and a constituent group that, um, is interested in topics related to police accountability. I also met with a policy expert from Local Progress on Immigration Policy, and I'm continuing to work on, um, coming up with a proposal to, um, bring in some Know Your Rights materials in print or some physical version, um, for county buildings. I also attended some community events, including the Gate Belmore Trail Expansion Ribbon Cutting. I attended a Long Lake, Lake Management District Boat Tour, and I attended the Jubilee Picnic.
All right, I think I'm up, so, um, well, the, uh, the lightest, uh, report that I've had so far. I was out with COVID for about five days, and it really took me down, and I sat while you all enjoyed the sunshine, and I did not. Um, and so, a lighter, uh, group of things for me to, so I attended for Boards and Commissions, Nisqually River Council, Law and Justice, uh, Committee, statewide boards, nine-one-one Advisory Committee meeting, and then the State, the, uh, State Advisory Council on Homelessness Quarterly meeting. Uh, I met with, uh, I'm, I serve on that board and I met with them actually twice. Also attended the Emergency Medical Services Council Budget Q and A Session, which was, uh, not many people asked very many questions, so it was pretty uneventful, but, um, but I thought it was really great that, um, Emergency Medical Services actually held a open forum for people to be able to ask questions, and so just wanted to acknowledge that, and good job. Uh, I attended some community events, uh, Lake Fair for the first night, then I was down. The Jubilee Picnic, um, Renew Thurston County Town Hall, and toured the Nisqually Generations Healing Center, which, for those who don't know what that is, that is, um, a new Nisqually project that's going to serve all people in our, um, community, not just Nisqually, um, tribal members. It's not on the tribal land, it is actually, um, in the spot of old Frankies out here on Pacific Avenue. Uh, it's beautiful, it's a new building, it has dental, it has medical, it has substance use, and it has mental health. It is, uh, a new kind of organization and something that will be concentrating on all health, whole health, for people who reach out for help, and they won't be turning anyone away. Um, and so, uh, really excited for that, they're waiting on a final license, but they should be opening by Sep, in early September. Uh, and then had several other meetings, and I'm not going to go into all of those, but one of them was, um, with the big, uh, with Coalition Against Big Trucks, which I did not know existed, and I learned. And so, um, you know, I thought, what is this, you know? But, um, I did listen and, and, uh, was in community with them as they explained to me what they did, and, uh, and that was quite interesting. Other than that, that was what I got done.
Glad you're feeling better.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, feel a little better.
Commissioner Fournier.
Yes, sir. Uh, we had a Fire Commissioners Association meeting, uh, nothing really to report from that. Attended one of the restaurant tours with, uh, Commissioner Mensah was there, and, uh, it was, it was a good meeting, put on by the Chamber of Commerce. I think it's already been mentioned, but, or I know it's already been mentioned, but I went to the Shalh, Shalhylus Tribe Conservation Visit where they, they purchased, uh, while they were, there was an arrangement where they are taking possession of a large farm, and, uh, Commissioner Mensah and I got lost in the woods and missed the opening of the ceremony. But it was good.
Shows what a big, awesome property it is.
Yeah, it's, it's really cool out there. Uh, attended the EMS Council meeting where they reviewed the E, the Medic One budget for the year. Uh, and that'll be something coming forth to the Board of County Commissioners with the unanimous, uh, support for adoption. Attended the Gate Belmore Trail along with, uh, several of the other Commissioners, where they did a ribbon cutting for the new two-point-seven miles of paved trail in South Thurston County. Flood Authority meeting and a Flood Authority follow-up, uh, where, in the follow-up, Commissioner Mensah and I met with some of the Flood Authority's folks to talk about the, uh, the MOU that they're, or the resolution they're wanting passed regarding their, uh, their overflow dam. Attended a Harlequin Theater visit that I believe some of the other Commissioners have attended as well. And, uh, enjoyed the opportunity to get to learn about some of the renovations they've done there.
Thank you. Um, attended the Washington State Association of Counties Federal Issues Committee. Forgot that one. I also attended the TRPC Subcommittee for the Executive Director Recruitment, that is, uh, moving along. Uh, and we're going to have a follow-up meeting in the coming weeks as well. Uh, attended an orientation and first meeting for the Partnership Council on Juvenile Justice. Attended the National, uh, Association of Hispanic County Officials. The Washington State Association of Counties General Meeting. Uh, there was a call to budget meeting. Attended inter-city transit, as well as the Thurston County Food Bank Breakfast with Commissioner Mensah. Attended a webinar for cross-system touches on youth homelessness and system involvement. Attended the ribbon cutting at the Gate Belmore Trail Expansion. Attended with Commissioner Mensah and Commissioner Claus, the Oregon Trail Days Parade. I want to thank George Sharp and the Tenino Community Members for giving us the opportunity to participate. Uh, that was quite a hustle that we had to do. And attended the Law Library Board Meeting. Uh, I will have some updates, a little bit more thorough updates for the Board tomorrow. Uh, had a chance to visit the Harlequin, uh, and see their improvements, as well as, uh, their backstage. And then had several meetings with external partners and community members that went, ranged from immigration to co-compliance, uh, to the courthouse. And I'm hoping to see everyone at the fair this week. I, Linda Zeman, which is Commissioner Mensah's assistant, was able to, uh, solidify and get us buckwheat. So, we're going to have buckwheat pancakes again this year, and so it's locally homegrown, so, uh, hope to see you at the pancake breakfast this weekend.
Awesome, thank you. A lot of things have been mentioned, the Shalhylus Wildlife Corridor event with Commissioner Fournier, the Chamber Restaurant Meeting, uh, the Tenino Parade, this, the river, the River Basin on local resolution. Gate Belmore Trail, I was really pleased to be able to provide some remarks there. I had a Finance Committee meeting, I got to do a ride-along with Public Works, and actually they let me paint the road, strike the road.
So, there's the squiggly line?
I get to do, we're doing that this week.
I had no idea that's what I was going to be doing. If you want to see my handiwork, it's on, uh, one hundred and thirteenth between, um, between Chaucer and, uh, Tilly on the south side. I think you'll be very impressed with what you see. I'm taking my family out there to see it. Uh, I met with, uh, a community member, uh, about, uh, elements of the comp plan, how we can do a better job of incorporating, uh, things related to heat-related events. I met with a representative from Port Blakely to discuss issues of mutual concern about forestry issues. Um, and, uh, a native health delivery webinar, which was super interesting. A meeting with County Manager and LACI leaders about their annexation plans and kind of brainstorming some good strategies for how to move forward. Food Bank Breakfast, the YWCA eightieth anniversary event on Saturday. And then State, oh, Rainier's Thurston County Employee Night. I didn't see anybody else there, I think, but that was super fun, uh, on Friday. And then State Building Code Council, and I wanted to mention a little bit about this because two sets of proposals were moved forward. One over my objection, uh, and one with my full support. The one with my support was related, two proposals related to embodied carbon and how we can, um, further study and figure out how to factor that into our overall, um, approach toward, um, energy efficiency and greenhouse gas reduction. And then the one I did not support, but got forwarded anyway, was, uh, related to EV charging infrastructure. How buildings are going to be, like multifamily buildings, will be required to either wire, which they call EB-capable, or actually create, which they call EV-ready, and what percentage of, um, what percentage of spaces need to be EV-ready or EV-capable? And what was done was essentially rolled back the standards for EV-ready and rolled forward standards for EB-capable. And I didn't feel that was an appropriate approach. King County weighed in very strongly against that, and I thought their arguments were persuasive, but we were outvoted. So, um, there'll be more to come on that, because that'll go to public comment, and the Building Code Council will have the ability to make changes if, if we feel that it's warranted and we can, you know, sway people's opinion.
I was like, will it serve any purpose if we write a letter?
It will, it's coming, it'll probably be this fall, it'll be an opportunity. I can let you guys know what the opportunities for that would be. Okay, that's my report, and now we are up to, uh, public comment related to general matter items. Anything I'm going to sign? And we're going to start with the six people that I have signed up, and then I'll open it up to anyone that didn't get a chance. Mr. Pettit, you're first up on the signup list.
Good afternoon Commissioners, John Pettit from, uh, Rich Road Area. Uh, this particular part of public comment, I, I want to emphasize about just a couple little different points. I, and personally, Ty, I'm proud of you, going out and painting roads. That particular is part of the topic which I was going to address a little bit, is leadership is best demonstrated by setting an example and participatory instead of just standing back, and even though it's nice to give awards, set the example, be there, that is always the best. Uh, my primary focus that I wanted to talk about, though, is you are about to enter the budget zone. The budget zone's pretty scary. Because Thurston County has major budget issues. And one likes to think, oh, well, we're okay, we're not okay. I think one of the things that people don't realize that, um... I think one of the things that people don't realize that, a good example of where we haven't been okay is we have a courthouse on the bill, on a hill over there, and we lacked putting a proper level of maintenance on it, which, while I don't like some of the many different things that occurred, bottom line is, is the building has been virtually destroyed by lack of maintenance. Now, we're going to be facing someday another couple hundred million dollars' worth of expenditure in order to take care of that lack of maintenance. But that also brings forth another topic. While we've been doing our planning with, and you have certain things about your budget and everything that you do, there's been a history of taking money from the road department and shifting it over to the general fund. As of the end of this year, since basically that practice started, you will have accumulated a total of $45 million, $400,000 that have been moved over from road funds over to general fund, which means by going into next year, we'll probably be exceeding the $50 million mark. And here's the point. What happens when you don't do maintenance at the courthouse? It's gone. When you take money out of the road fund, that money is intended to be used for maintaining our roads. So, it only gets more expensive to maintain it, and that directly affects more the unincorporated people than the entire county-wise. So, we need to eliminate road shifting and such, because it's gonna, it's gonna, we have to pay the fiddler sometime, and the bottom line is, is we have some money problems. It isn't going to get better unless you just follow, and you'll love this term again, the color of money, and use it for what it's supposed to be used for. Thank you.
Terry Ballard, Solana Reed on deck. I like your hat, Mr. Ballard.
Hi, my name, my name's Terry Ballard. I live in Tangawood. I'm a 35-year veteran with 29 years of active duty, retiring in 2012, and I'm also take care of my area, which I don't see many others taking care of their area. I am also the Democratic Party Precinct Committee Officer for Lydia Hawk, which is better known as Tangawood. I'm going to discuss something that we always, and we always discuss, but nothing ever happens, because we're living in a democracy, okay? Ruled by government. We're not living in a constitutional republic ruled by law, and here's why. The Attorney General did an opinion back in November 20, back in November 1987. They said that boundaries of the seat of government cannot be enlarged by the growth or enlargement of a plaid corporation or a city or town designated by the seat of government. This building was annexed to the City of Olympia without the prior vote of the people per the Constitution of the State of Washington, okay, in 1964. It's already in an Attorney General Opinion, and guess who signed this Attorney General Opinion? Better known as the First Deputy Attorney General Female of Washington State, Christina Gregwire. The next, Thurston County versus City of Olympia and Tumwater in 2004. The count, the, the courts tried to do the same thing that they're doing now to you, to you. They want to move you out of the courthouse, they want to move the sheriff out of the courthouse, they want to move all these officers out of the courthouse and have their courthouse, wherever it might be. Now, we're going to spend a lot of money on a courthouse. We have $50 million in a bond that's supposed to work that, work that courthouse. What happened to that? Okay? Did it go back into our deficit of $100 million? Absolutely not. Okay? In the court case, they concluded that the word "at," okay? Notwithstanding of the AGO, concluded that the State of Washington Constitution requires all executive offices to maintain "at," not "near," not everything else. They disagreed with that. They, they meddled the word "at" to no end. Okay? Well, RCW 361690 says that all these offices, primary offices, have to be not "at" the county seat, but "in" the courthouse. Does this look like a courthouse? It doesn't look like a courthouse to me. That's in violation. It says, "No county seat shall be removed unless three-fifths of the vote of the people." That's in Article, that's in Article 11. Okay? It goes on and on and on, and I am totally distraught about this building. We spent $10 million, more or less probably came out of the road fund. $10 million for a $4 million, we don't, a building we don't own, against your own policy? It's ridiculous. You're spending money that we don't have. Thank you.
Solana Reed. Bitch of Sowers on deck, but if he didn't stay, then it would be Rhonda Larson-Cramer.
I always appreciate public commenters. My name is Solana Reed, and I live in East Olympia. I am a former employee of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. I want to read your mission to you real quick, "To create a community that promotes health, commerce, and environmental protection with transparency and accountability." Around this time last year, I was terminated from my job with public health, and this was right after reporting several findings of suspected fraud from one of our providers. I'm not going to go into the details, because I'm also going to make a demand at the end of this, but I will say that I conducted a client file review, just 10 random files. Nine of those files were given to me by, by the provider. The files were either fabricated or altered with my supervisor's assistance, and none of the clients were real or eligible to receive funding, receive rental assistance, and all required documentation was missing. This information was provided to my supervisors. In addition, there was evidence collected that an employee received tens of thousands of dollars in rental assistance payments. That provider was also given two $200,000 advances for services, only at the time of my termination. They'd only partially repaid one, the, part of the first $200,000, but it's illegal to advance public funds for services anyway. Why did we allow that to happen? Prior to starting here with the county, I served on the Thurston County Affordable Housing Advisory Board for a year as chair. I was diligent, I was, I served my position with integrity, and that's unacceptable to allow, to allow providers to take advantage of the system, even worse to let individuals who are employed by the county overlook that. Since the day I flagged these issues, no one from the county has ever interviewed me about the fraud I uncovered. Not a single question. Why? Because they don't want the truth. Instead, I was terminated under false pretenses, and my name smeared by the, your public health director and two of my supervisors. They claimed I broke public policy by having a second job, even though there was no conflict of interest, and I disclosed it. They also said that I stole confidential information, files, which can be easily proven to be false by IT. That never happened. Just this week, that same provider issued a public apology for harm caused to the community this past year, and there has been, this county has yet to respond. I'm, I've not been able to tell my story or my side of what happened, most importantly, report the fraud that I found. We're in a housing crisis. You all don't have money to pay for our current homeless services, services now. We're not talking about $10. We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars that we, that, we, we have issues, we have problems. And to me, to ignore it is to be part of the problem. There is no way that we can accomplish this mission for transparency and accountability if you don't hold your staff accountable. I am going to, I'm wrapping up. I demand that someone contact me, but I will be here every single week until there is a full investigation and all this money is accounted for, and the wrongdoing, the wrongs that were done to me were righted. I'll be here every week. I promise.
Ms. Kramer. Tammy Tonder on deck.
I'm Tammy Tonder, and I live at 9330 Springer Lake Lane Southeast. Last week, staff briefed this body on a, on the Comprehensive Plan Draft, specifically the goal of reducing new housing in rural areas 5% instead of the current 12%. You asked the cities if they were on board with this, and were told that the cities have already been making changes to increase zoning densities in the urban core to accommodate this. I heard from the meeting that the builder community's views Thurston County as the worst place to build in Washington. I think a great discussion of that issue took place after that comment, and I want to thank this body for its insightfulness in that regard. I've worked in local government permitting for many years, and recently retired from a city in Thurston County. My observation is that builders will say permitting takes too long, whether it does or not take too long. Builders will say this to get local governments to make things as easy as possible for them. The builder community is small, and it makes up only a tiny fraction of voters. They may have an outsized influence on staff because staff interfaces with the developer far more often than with the general public. In terms of what most residents want here, as this body mentioned last week, residents consistently support keeping development in urban areas. That makes it less expensive for people who can't afford a car, and it preserves farm and forest lands and rural character. A permit process that protects public good, even when it is slow, is not broken. It is doing exactly what it was designed to do. This is especially so when the permit process in cities is faster. That's where the builders can go. I'd like to mention on a related issue, urban growth boundaries, when respected, can permanently prevent sprawl, not just delay it. It seems that eventually we will have to use rural lands for urban density because of population growth. I'd like to challenge this assumption. In Germany and other parts of Europe, strong regional planning and cultural norms help preserve farmlands in rural communities. Rural land is not inevitably next in line for development. If you go to Germany, you'll see villages permanently surrounded by vast farmlands and forest lands. We can do the same here. And as another point, just as far as the commenting period that has been moved to the end, I am retired. It does not bother me, but I think it's very inconvenient for most of the public which is working, and I wish you might reconsider that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Larson-Cramer, and I live at 1814 East Side Street in Olympia. I want to say how much I appreciate all the hard work by the community development staff in Thurston County. They usually do excellent work. I wanted to alert you to a mistake, though. It was well-intentioned, but it may suggest a need for extra training. In February of 2025, staff completed the Supplemental Environmental Impact Statement for the Comprehensive Plan Update. In April, the Planning Commission held two public hearing meetings on that update, and at the hearings, a consultant for developers submitted a request to add UGA swap language to the Comprehensive Plan. Staff did add it in May of this year. The language staff added actually makes an incorrect statement, which I will explain in a minute. The Growth Management Act has strong public participation requirements. When staff added substantive policy language to the comp plan after the public hearing, it prevented that language from getting vetted by public input. The State Environmental Policy Act also has strong public participation requirements. Adding this language after the EIS was done prevented the Planning Commission from receiving the benefit of the public input for that language. Now, let's get to what was added and why it was incorrect. The County Buildable Lands Report is available at the website of the Thurston Regional Planning Council. If you go to that report and you turn to PDF page 51, you will see that it made significant set-asides of pocket gopher territory. It assumes that 10% of the preferred gopher soils would be counted as unbuildable countywide. If you go to PDF page 49 of that report, you'll see Table 3-3, which shows excess development capacity in every UGA Thurston, in Thurston County. In other words, the UGAs here are all larger than needed for population growth for the next 20 years. Another thing to note is that the Lacey UGA has the highest growth rate in the county, but significantly fewer preferred gopher soils than Tumwater or Olympia, meaning fewer areas that will likely trigger habitat mitigation concerns. This contributes to a comparatively lower development constraint burden in Lacey. When there, where there are the most gopher soils, there is also the slowest population growth. That's in Tumwater. Also, the Buildable Lands Report correctly does not count critical areas as buildable. Thus, the Buildable Lands Report is not overestimating buildable lands. It is accurate. Staff has included in the draft comp plan by request of developers, language that states the opposite, and states that UGA swaps are an answer to this, but it's a false premise. So, I would ask that there is more training given to staff on this problem. Thanks.
That covers the folks signed up. Anyone else in the room who wanted to provide comp comment? And I don't see anyone online. So, that concludes public comment, and that concludes the end of today's agenda. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.